It's 5:30, the March 18th, 2014 meeting of the City Council. The city of Springfield, Illinois has called a board if you'd all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the room?
Yes, Alderman Edwards.
Here.
Alderman Simpson.
Here.
Alderman Turner. Alderman Lesko.
Here.
Alderman Kahnman. Alderman Jobe.
Here.
Alderman McMiniman.
Here.
Alderman Tylin.
Here.
Alderman Dove. Alderman Griffin.
Here.
Mayor Houston.
Here. Before we get started, number one, we do televise these live, and I would remind anyone that the polls are open until 7 o'clock tonight. If you haven't voted, you still have that opportunity for the next hour and a half. And tonight, we have a number of outstanding young people in our community that we are going to recognize. And I'd like to start off by asking Ryan Pell to come forward, his parents might like, if they'd like to join him. We also have the principal and president of Sacred Heart Griffin High School, if you'd like to come up. For those of you that may not know Ryan, to see him, he is an outstanding student athlete. This is a gentleman who, last week, was named the Outstanding Swimmer in the state of Illinois. He, at the state meet this year, won two events, setting state records in both events. He is a person who holds a national YMCA record, and he is an outstanding student, which is the most important thing. And we're going to recognize him with proclamation that reads, "Whereas the achievements of Sacred Heart Griffin Student highlight commitment, spirit, and pride of Springfield and should be recognized; and whereas Ryan Held's accomplishments at Sacred Heart Griffin as a Sacred Heart Griffin Cyclone should be recognized and make the city of Springfield proud; and whereas Ryan has always held a mentality of working hard and improving in his swimming while maintaining an ideal of service to others; and whereas Ryan has been named an Academic All-American as well as a Swimming All-American; and whereas, in his senior year, he broke two meet records on Saturday, March 1st, 2014; and whereas Ryan won the 50-yard freestyle in 19.76 seconds and repeated as state champion with a personal best 43.73 seconds in the 100-yard freestyle." Now therefore, I, J. Michael Houston, Mayor of the city of Springfield, Illinois, do hereby proclaim March 18th, 2014, to be known as Ryan Held Day in recognition of the dedication, hard work, and accomplishment of Ryan Held. Ryan, we're very, very proud of you.
I guess I'll say a quick thank you. I want to thank, first of all, I just thank Mayor Mike Houston just for giving me the award, and for the whole entire council to accept or give me this award. Thank you to my parents, who gave you the motivation, drive to swim, and thank you to my friends, family, teammates, and especially the SHG community, who gave me support and comfort and really encouraged me to do my best. And then, above all, I'd just like to thank God for giving me the talents and abilities he has blessed me with. Thank you.
And now, I will turn it over to our city clerk.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I'd like to ask two young ladies, Angelica Villegas and Ashna Prakash, to join me up here at the podium. Don't be bashful, ladies, don't be bashful. As many of you know, my office, along with members of Springfield School District 186, resurrected the Do the Right Thing program a number of months ago. And tonight, we are recognizing these two young ladies, and I would just like to read a short blurb about them and to recognize the accomplishments that they both have worked on together in their school. This evening, Angelica and Ashna are being recognized as co-captains of the Me2We Leadership Program at Isle School. They have learned about the United Nations Millennium Development Goals, and as a result, have started the Isle's Me2We Fair Trade Store. They not only run the store, but they are spreading awareness and raising money for a girls' school in Ghana. They have raised $200 for the United Way of Sangamon County and $500 of their $1,000 goal for a girls' school in Ghana. Please join with me in recognizing these two young ladies. Congratulations. Thank you so much. On behalf of all the members of the council, thank you. And Keith Lippert, would you please join me? And if I could ask, Cap-- I'm-- thank you. This is Captain Jeff Miller from the Springfield Fire Department. And if I could ask Deputy Chief Dennis Arnold, as well as Deputy Chief Hart, to join me. Tonight, we are recognizing Keith Lippert, a student at Lanfair High School. And the following was submitted as part of Keith's nomination by Captain Jeff Miller. Keith noticed a fire on the side of the apartment building near his home. After calling the fire department, Keith and his mother started knocking on doors in the apartment complex to notify them of the fire. He even helped to douse the fire with a garden hose before the fire department arrived. We'd just like to honor you tonight, Keith. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Dennis.
I do like those shoes. Okay, we will move on with our zoning agenda. The first item on the agenda is docket number 2014-002 for property located at 1737 North 14th Street. The petitioners are Margaret and George Richard. The present zoning classification is an I-1 Light Industrial District, Section 155.040. The requested zoning relief is reclassification to an I-2 Heavy Industrial District, Section 155.041, and a conditional permitted use pursuant to Section 155.041, conditional permitted uses in an I-2 Heavy Industrial District, automotive dismantling and wrecking establishment, to allow petitioner to dismantle cars for processing and recycling. The Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission's recommendation is denial. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is to deny petition as submitted. The chair will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to ask for this docket to be continued 30 more days.
Second.
It's been moved in second to continue docket number 2014-002 until the April zoning meeting, discussion. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of the motion vote yes, those opposed vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes 7-0. Excuse me, 9-0. The next item on the zoning agenda is docket number 2014-003 for property located at 1221 and 1241, No Point Place. The petitioners are RSBR Investments LLC, contract purchaser. The present zoning classification is an I-1 Light Industrial District, Section 155.040. The requested zoning relief is reclassification to B-1 Highway Business Service District, Section 155.033, to allow the petitioner to construct and operate a retail sales dollar general store. The Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation is approval. The planning and zoning commission recommendation is to approve petition as submitted for reclassification to a B-1 Highway Business Service District, Section 155.033. Chair will entertain a motion.
I'd like to move to accept the planning and zoning petition as submitted.
Second.
And I would just like to say, before we vote, that the petitioners have worked very, very well with the Neighborhood Association. They met with them, and they met all of their demands and suggestions that they made, and I really have to commend them for the effort that they put forth. There were multiple trips that petitioners made from out of town to come to Springfield to meet, so I really do commend them for the effort that they made on behalf of this project.
Okay, we have a motion in second to accept the planning and zoning commission recommendation to approve the petition as submitted for reclassification to a B-1 Highway Business Service District, Section 155.033. Discussion. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of the motion vote yes, those opposed vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes 10-0. The next item on the agenda is docket number 2014-007 for property located at 122 West Pine Street. The petitioner is the Rutledge Youth Foundation Incorporated. The present zoning classification is an R-2 Single Family and Duplex Residence District, Section 155.017. The requested zoning relief is reclassification to Office District, Section 155.020, to allow the petitioner to use this property as office space for the staff of the Rutledge Youth Foundation Incorporated. This property had a use variance to allow an insurance law in chiropractic office, docket number 1996-039. In the alternative, petitioner requests a use variance to allow for office staff for the Rutledge Youth Foundation. The Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Plan Commission recommendation is denial the petition as submitted, but recommends approval of a use variance to allow for the operation of a not-for-profit office. The planning and zoning commission recommendation is to approve the staff recommendation to deny the reclassification, but recommend approval of a use variance to allow the operation of a not-for-profit office. The chair will entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the staff recommendation to deny the reclassification, but recommend a use variance to allow for the operation of a not-for-profit office.
Second. It's been moved in second that we accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission and deny the petition as submitted, but recommend the approval of a use variance to allow the operation of a not-for-profit office. Discussion. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of the motion vote yes, all those opposed vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes 10-0. The final item on the zoning agenda is docket number 2014-008 for property located at 1249 Toronto Road. The petitioner is Heartland Development Group LLC and Tijelmet Incorporated. The present zoning classification is a B-1 Highway Business Service District, Section The requested zoning relief, a conditional permitted use pursuant to Section 155.033, conditional permitted uses in B-1 Highway Business Service District, and Section 155.200, taverns and microbreweries, and a variance of Section 155.200, taverns within 100 feet of a residence, church, school, park, community facility, or daycare. The Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation is denial. The planning and zoning commission recommendation is denial of petition as submitted. The chair will entertain a motion.
I move that we make a motion for passage as filed.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the petition as submitted. Discussion.
Discussion, Mayor. I'm going to vote no on the premise that, based on the summarized transcript, this is a packaged liquor store that wishes to pour wine to obtain a video gaming license and therefore to permit the gaming operations. And for historical reasons, given previously, I'll be of no understanding.
This is really a question that we do need to answer, because this is not going to be the only one of these that we are going to see, because most packaged liquor places are interested in getting a license so they can pour wine, which then gives them a liquor license to apply for the gaming machines. Thus far, we have not done that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Then don't we need to go to the source, the state legislature, and have them tweak some language?
Well--
Or can we do that ourselves?
Well, no. What it-- under the state statutes, you have to have a liquor license to allow you to serve alcohol at the establishment. A packaged liquor store does not have that. And by allowing them to serve wine, they then have the ability to then apply for a gaming license.
But doesn't that fall outside the intent of the state statute?
Oh, I think that's why we have not been issuing those thus far.
So, Mayor--
Mm-hmm.
So, in addition to the zoning relief, they're going to need to get a change in their liquor license? Is that correct?
That's what this is, that's the purpose of this, is to allow them a conditional permitted use, so they can have a liquor license.
Right, but then on top of that, they still have to get the liquor license. You still have to issue that.
That's true.
So, why do they need, what is the zoning now that they, that doesn't, I mean, why do they need the zoning relief?
To apply for the liquor license.
No, I mean, but oftentimes, we get situations where you can't sell alcohol because you're so many feet, you know, too close to a residential house. But that obviously isn't the case here, because they're selling--
Alderman, if I may?
Yes.
It's a different conditional permitted use. We have one for a packaged liquor store, we also have them for taverns.
I see. So, they have it for packaged liquor, but they don't have it for taverns, sir?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Alderman Griffin?
One of the things, I know one of the things that hit here, and I was reading through the transcript back here, was did we ever address the hours of operations, sir?
Yes, we did at the hearing, 10:00 to 12:00, 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. He's not going to change his hours.
But that was one of the questions that they had on this after that was over. Said that the stuff submitted did not include information regarding the hours and method of operation to determine if there'd be a negative effect.
Alderman Simpson?
No, I was--
Alderman Griffin?
Well, I read through this, too, and I understand the dilemma we're in with the gaming machines. It falls into what Mr. Patel's talking about, wine tasting, that he wants his customers to be able to taste wine. And if this is a way, mechanism for him to get gaming machines, then that's a law problem. But I understand, I've been in places where people go, man, if I could taste this, I'd be more inclined to buy the wine if I could taste it. Now, if that doesn't fall into what we can or can't do, then that muddies the water. Because I have been in places where people don't buy something because they can't taste it, and wine is one of those things where you want to taste it before you buy it.
Mr. Mayor? So, I guess I'll ask the attorney representing, so is the liquor establishment's attaining this to get gaming, correct? He's not doing it to, he's--
No, he's, no, he's going to have wine tasting. He wants--
But he wants gaming, that's the--
He wants gaming also. But he does, in this area of the town, there is no establishment that have wine tasting. He is going to be doing wine tastings. He's also going to allow people, he wants to bring in a different, a higher-quality wine, and people typically don't buy that unless they get the opportunity to taste it. So, that's, that is a very part and parcel of this, trying to make this business survive. He's going to hire two more people, also to be working if this passes tonight.
Alderman Tylin, to you.
I guess I was going along the same direction as Alderman Jobe, is, you know, reading through this, you know, the, it almost seems like the wine tasting is primary, and the gaming portion is almost secondary. Is it, or is it a part and parcel where he wants both, or is it just that he gets the benefit of both if he gets the wine tasting?
He has to have pouring license to be able to have video gaming. So, he is going to, there's no doubt he will apply for video gaming as well, but he wants the wine tasting. He's trying to make the store survive, as we talked about at the prior meeting. The video gaming, also, he will be applying for, if he gets, if we get the permitted use.
I guess then my next question goes to zoning. These other locations, such as, you know, the one that comes up repeatedly in here is like Corkscrew. And I know there are several other locations in our city limits that are wine tasting areas, where they allow people to taste the wine before they purchase it, or even buy it by the glass. Do any of those places have a gaming license at this point?
Can I answer that? The Corkscrew does not.
All About Wine does.
All About Wine.
Does that in the city?
Oh, Tindrum.
That's the difference. The Corkscrew's had theirs for some time, and they build a regular bar in the back--
Right.
--of that, and they use it for wine tasting on a very regular basis.
They have classes in other places.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. I mean, it really comes down to a matter of making a choice, whether this is something we want to allow or we don't. Further discussion?
Well, it sounds like we're already allowing it to a certain extent.
No, we're not.
Where you pointed out with, well, with regard to the Corkscrew.
They don't have machines.
But they could get them if they wanted.
They could, but they've had that ability in terms of pouring for some years.
But, if I may, I don't think that's fair to say, well, they don't, but they could. And to use that as a judgment to deny this business the right to do what the Corkscrew's doing. The Corkscrew has the ability to put machines in now, period, and they could file for a license. So, I go along with what my colleague said. We're already at that point, we've already crossed that bridge.
I think, Mayor, if I might, I think it's unfair to people, other wine shops that might want to compete with what the Corkscrew does, if we say no more, you know, we're not going to allow this any further, then they have a monopoly on it, and nobody else can, no competitor can get in the market. And I don't think we're here to control the market. I think we should be as much as possible to let the free market control, you know, this item.
Further discussion?
I guess, I do, and I just asked zoning, what is the difference between Corkscrew and these other places? What allows Corkscrew to do what they do and these other places not?
Yeah, it's like I was telling you, Alderman, they have a CPU for a tavern that they got back 10 years ago.
So, is that some, is that what this comes down to, is that this particular location is trying to get to where they can have the tavern license? Or is this, or are that two different ways of getting to the end result?
On-site consumption, you need a CPU for a tavern.
Alderman Griffin?
As part of testimony, they had asked Mr. Patel, if you get the pouring license, there's nothing that comes with that pouring license that says this is what you're limited to pour. He said, you know, I won't be selling beer, or whiskey, or liquor, or anything else. I'll only be selling wine. But there's no liquor license we have that designates that. Am I correct?
There is a liquor license for beer and wine.
That's what I'm saying. So, there is no way that we can hold anyone to that. I mean, if we give them license, they can do what they want. They can pour what they want to pour. There's no way to differentiate that or have a, if you look through all the different classifications, the lightest ones are going to be beer and wine, or liquor, beer and wine, et cetera, but there is nothing that says only wine.
That's correct.
So, we'll basically just be giving them a liquor license to pour whatever.
Correct.
Well, just beer and wine.
If that's, if that's a license that you apply for.
But also, Alderman Griffin, if we wanted to, we could amend the code and create such a license for just wine.
But not tonight.
Pardon?
Not tonight.
Not tonight, no.
So, we've got to address this tonight.
Further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion to approve the petition as submitted, vote yes, those opposed vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes 6, yes, 3 no, and 1 present. Moving to the regular city council agenda, the chair will recognize Treasurer Langfelder as soon as he has the opportunity to get set up for presentation of a financial report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The corporate fund monthly cash report for the month of February, we had a beginning cash balance of $5,171,791. Receipts for the month of February totaled $7,611,303. Disbursements for the month totaled $9,265,124. So, our ending cash balance in the corporate fund at the end of February totaled $3,517,970.
The chair will entertain a motion to approve the financial report.
So, move--
It's been moved in second, discussion, hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion say aye, those opposed say nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. Before we move into the regular agenda, Victoria Rigor is here this evening, representing the Susan G. Komen Race for the Cure, and they are about to kick off an inaugural race here in Springfield in May, and would like to address the council.
Um, Manny, do you know--
I see you voted today.
I did, I did vote today, because I knew I'd be here a long time. I want, I've been here on a lot of different occasions to talk about a lot of things that I support, some things I don't, for Downton Springfield, Inc., as you know. And many of them, I'm very, very proud of, but on a personal note, I'd like to take this personal privilege to let you know that myself, along with Dr. Jane Arbuthnot, are the honorary co-chairs of Susan G. Komen Race for the Cure, coming to Springfield for the very first time. Many of you have heard of different breast cancer races throughout our community, but this is Susan G. Komen, the largest revenue generator of breast cancer research dollars next to the federal government. We're very excited about this race. Peoria, of course, where Susan G. Komen was born and died, has had this race for nearly 30 years, I believe. We are part of that affiliate of Peoria and the surrounding counties, and finally, the race has come to the Capitol city. Peoria has nearly 15,000 people. St. Louis has the largest Susan G. Komen in the world, at 75,000 people. We have some very ambitious people here who would like to meet that and beat it, and some great sponsors on board. But the race, I want to introduce you first to its co-chairs, the first-ever mother and daughter co-chairs of a Susan G. Komen race, as many have been held all over the world. And to tell you also, this is the first nighttime race ever in the history of Susan G. Komen. It'll be held at 6:00 or 6:30 on Friday, May 16th, around the new Capitol, as I call it. We'll have pink lighted buildings and pink fireworks and some wonderful things to show off of our city. But at this time, I want to introduce you to Julie and Nicole Henderson, our mother-daughter co-chairs for the Susan G. Komen inaugural race, May 16th, 2014.
I just want to start by thanking you guys for allowing us this opportunity to come talk to you about this brand-new race in Springfield, and also to thank the city for all the support and assistance that has been given to us to determine our race route and where our central stage, along with other various booths, will be around the Capitol. Susan G. Komen, we're a part of the memorial affiliate, which covers 36 counties around Springfield and Peoria, and 75% of the net proceeds that are raised by our race participants are going to stay here in those 36 counties in our community to fund grants like what was given here in Springfield, Mamogram Mondays, which allowed uninsured women to get mammograms. The other 25% of the net proceeds goes up to National for research. So, just the impact alone that Springfield can do for our community is huge.
And my name is Julie Henderson, this is my beautiful daughter, who is my co-chair. I'm originally from Peoria, so I was involved in Susan G. Komen when I was younger. I'm actually an eight-year survivor, so very blessed. We are very fortunate to have such an awesome group of people to help bring this to Springfield, and we are here to put a challenge out to the Aldermen. We brought you information on becoming, on forming a team, and we'd like you to take the challenge and help us to basically paint the town pink on May 16th. Again, 75% of the net proceeds are going to stay in the local service area, and I actually have an employee who is uninsured, who took advantage of the Mamogram Mondays. That actually came back clear, but as a result of that screening, she's 42 years old, and they found out that she had never had a pap smear. They did one a week later, found out that she had cervical cancer, and actually ended up saving her life. And that was really because of what started with the Mamogram Mondays. So, we hope that we can count on you. We brought you some information, and again, thank you for all your help, and we'll look forward to seeing you on May 16th at the Capitol.
Is this a question, is this a 10K race?
It's a 5K. There's multiple aspects, there's a timed 5K that's available. You can walk the 5K, so it won't be timed, and then we actually have what's called a Family Fund 1K, which will be right around the Capitol. It's exactly a mile. So, we also have a Spirit Walker for those that maybe can't take that challenge to even walk the one mile, but want to be there in spirit, so.
Thank you. The chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances into the record of this council meeting.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Those opposed, say nay.
Aye.
The motion carries. The chair will entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the March 4th, 2014 city council meeting and approve the minutes.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Those opposed, say nay.
Aye.
The motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda into the record of this council meeting.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Those opposed, say nay.
Aye.
The motion carries. The chair will entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion?
Discussion, Mayor. I'd like to vote for Madam Clerk, a no on 2014-089, which is a collective bargaining agreement, a present on 2014-090, which is a workers' compensation settlement, and a no on 2014-094, which is a liquor license for a gaming parlor. Thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes 10-0. Chair will entertain a motion to remove Agenda Number 2014-109 from committee and place it on the debate agenda.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion?
What's 109, Mayor?
That's the NAPA.
Thank you. This is to place it on...
Debate agenda.
Debate, discussion, Mayor. Last week, we...
Wait, did you do the discussion?
This is a discussion on the procedural motion, Mayor.
Okay.
This is a procedural motion to place something that we held in committee last week, and I'm concerned that when the council acts to place something in committee, the frequent expectation of the public is that it won't come up for final passage the very next week. And I know personally, I had conversations with some of the city vendors out there and expressed to them, well, it's been held in committee, therefore, I don't think it'll come up for potential passage tonight. And so, I'm real concerned about the mixed signals we sent us to council. An important ordinance like this one, which is a very important ordinance, it's at the heart of democracy to give notice and opportunity to be heard. And so, on a situation like tonight, if we actually are considering passing an ordinance when there were mixed signals out there, I think it's a problem. And furthermore, if, for example, during the week, an Alderman thinks, well, let's, this is important enough, or for various reasons, let's actually try to passage it, I think the duty is upon that Alderman to contact our city coordinator, Joe Davis, who is very helpful in these kinds of things, and then he could put out a message to all the Aldermen and say, hey, it looks like we're going to go to final passage on this. Or, and/or, our city coordinator, Joe Davis, who knows all the media, he can put out a message to the media, a press release, saying, hey, members of the public, vendors out there, it looks like this might go to final passage on Tuesday night, therefore, you better come to council. So, those are my concerns, Mayor, on the procedural question of whether we put this on final passage tonight and for debate. If there's a sponsoring Alderman that actually wants to pass this tonight, let's hear that. If it's just to put it on the debate, just to debate it, but then leave it in committee, then that's a second type of situation, and I would agree with that. If we want to talk about it tonight, but with the idea of then putting it back to committee after the discussion, that would seem to be consistent with fair play and allowing the members of the public to weigh in on this issue. Thank you, Mayor.
Further discussion? Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Those opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Nay.
The motion carries. Agenda numbers 2012-123, 2012-376, 2013-174, 2013-266, 2013-376, 2013-397, 2013-469, 2013-470, 2014-022, 2014-024, 2014-069, 2014-085, and 2014-091 remain tabled or in committee. The next item on the agenda is 2014-088. An ordinance amending Chapter 36 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended by adding Section 36.49, requiring city council approval prior to across-the-board wage increases to municipal employees not represented by a union. Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2014-088 on final passage.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. All those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open. Motion fails on a three yes and seven no vote. The next item on the agenda is DocuSign 2014-093, an ordinance authorizing execution of a redevelopment agreement with Enos Park Development, LLC, for assistance in acquiring various properties in the Enos Park Neighborhood Tax Increment Financing District for redevelopment purposes, utilizing Enos Park Neighborhood Tax Increment Finance Funds in an amount not to exceed $250,000 for the Office of Planning and Economic Development. Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2014-093 on final passage.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded for passage. Discussion?
Mayor, I think this program has been great for Enos Park. You can go there, you can see it with your own eyes. Abandoned, blighted buildings, vacant land is, are being removed and replaced with owner-occupied houses and businesses with owners who take pride in keeping up their property and keeping it in tip-top shape, so, and as more and more of these properties turn around, I think success breeds success, and if we find more and more people wanting to move and develop properties in Enos Park, and so, I think it's a great program, and we should continue doing it, and probably even consider looking to creating a land bank for the entire city for abandoned, so that this kind of process can be helpful in other parts of the city as well.
Further discussion? Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor, excuse me, Alderman Simpson?
And I applaud Alderman Cammon's statements, and this procedure is not new to Enos Park. We're doing the same thing in War II, and it was actually War II that came up with the idea and presented it to the prior administration. So, this is not anything that's new to the city, so it is happening. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes 10-0. The next item on the agenda is DocuSign 2014-104, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsible bid and authorizing execution of contract number PW14-01-85, with Truman Hill Flat and Sons &amp; Company Incorporated to furnish construction on the 2015 Batuminus Overlay Program, Part A, in an amount not to exceed $10,494,282.76 for the Office of Public Works. The chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2014-104 on final passage.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded for passage. Discussion, hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes 10-0. The next item on the agenda is DocuSign 2014-105, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsible bid and authorizing execution of contract number PW14-01-85, with United Contractors Midwest Incorporated, to furnish construction on the 2015 Batuminus Overlay Program, Part B, in an amount not to exceed $10,993,682.18 for the Office of Public Works. Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2014-105 on final passage.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded to place DocuSign 2014-105 on final passage. Discussion, hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes 10-0. The next item on the agenda is DocuSign 2014-108, an ordinance authorizing execution of a contract for the purchase of real property bounded by Forest Street, Capitol Avenue, 5th and Jackson Street, using Central Area Tax Increment Finance Funds in an amount of $1,536,950 with the state of Illinois, and a contract for purchase of three parcels using Central Area Tax Increment Finance Funds in an amount not to exceed $25,000. For a total amount of both contracts not to exceed $1,561,950 for the Office of Planning and Economic Development as amended, the chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2014-108 on final passage.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion?
Mayor, I'd like, I propose, I'd like to move for adoption of proposed amendment number two.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt amendment number two.
Yeah, basically, what this amendment does is for this advisory committee, the way it was originally structured, it said, should include, at the end, it said, in addition to a number of mentions, people that should be included on the committee, and then, it says, in the Ward 6 Aldermen. So, this would change, they have to say, the Aldermen and whose ward the property is located, which is in Ward 6, and/or their designee, and all Aldermen whose ward is in the Central Area Tiff District, or their designee. Now, this project is being funded with Central Area Downtown Tiff money, of course, and it has a big, it's basically a downtown project. It is in one particular ward, obviously, but the project has a, is going to have a great impact on downtown and the Capitol area, which is in, which is mostly in Ward 5, and the Capitol area, of course, is in, mostly in Ward 5 also. So, I think it should be, you know, a joint project, or jointly serving on the advisory committee should be those Aldermen who represent those wards that are most closely connected with this project.
Okay. Further discussion on the ordinance as amended?
Further discussion? That amendment seems to make a lot of good sense. I think what Alderman Cammon is seeking here is cooperation among the downtown Aldermen, because the block, this block development is a downtown issue. It's not a Ward 6 issue, it's a downtown issue. So, that level of cooperation is very wholesome. I think that's what we all tried to achieve. I think that's what Alderman Jobe and I have tried to achieve on MacArthur Boulevard. I remember when, you know, Roberts Automotive, that was a Ward 7 property, but I never, never criticized Alderman Jobe. I encouraged you to express your views, because you care about MacArthur. And, of course, Hy-Vee, you know, you were invited to the groundbreaking, you've been involved with Hy-Vee. I asked you to be cosponsored on the ordinance to create a MacArthur Tax Increment Financing District, and that happens to be entirely within Ward 7. But I recognize that you have a very distinct interest, and you were president of the MacArthur Boulevard Association, so to now try to exclude the other downtown Aldermen from this downtown project, it just seems inconsistent with your past efforts at achieving cooperative efforts among the Aldermen and among all those that are stakeholders in these kinds of issues. So, I think Alderman Cammon's got a good point.
Alderman Jobe?
With all due respect, Alderman McMenamin, I didn't exclude Sam Cammon. I mean, for crying out loud, he didn't even know where the town branch was last week during discussion, which is a major water sewer town branch, right slab-dab in the middle of that block. I never once excluded him. I'm trying to figure out where Alderman Cammon was for two and a half years, when Mayor Houston, Senator Durbin, Senator Menard, and others lobbied Governor Quinn. But I welcome Sam to the discussion, and if he feels he can add a few more ideas to the mix, so be it.
Further discussion?
Could we vote? Could we vote, please?
Yeah, let's vote.
Well, clarification? Clarification, Alderman Jobe?
Yeah.
What the last statement you just said, meaning, I welcome him to be named on this committee specifically by this ordinance, or you specifically would like to have his input to you as a representative?
It doesn't matter to me how Aldermen vote. I welcome everybody's comments and participation. It's too important of a project and a part of the downtown not to get everybody's in. But I think the advisory agreement was well thought out by the mayor and I and others, and if Sam feels he needs the amendment to get on the committee, let's see what happens.
Further discussion? Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor of the ordinance, or the amendment, vote yes. Amendment fails 5-6. Further discussion on the ordinance as amended? All those, there's no further discussion. All those in favor of the ordinance?
Discussion.
Alderman Simpson?
I made the statement last week, and I'll make it again, that I hope that you make sure that there's diversity on this council, because of the entities listed, I don't know that there's a lot of diversity within those bodies. So, I would hope that you would make sure that there's some diversity on the council, I mean, this committee.
Good point. Thank you.
Further discussion, Mayor?
Norm McMenamin?
Does the city of Springfield have a copy of the appraisal that the state CMS department made on this property?
No, we do not.
Have we asked for a copy?
Yes, we have.
What was the answer given?
That you have badgered them to the point where they will not give it to us.
Who has badgered who?
You.
Is that a correct statement, Mr. Farmer? I have never had conversations with Central Management Services.
We made numerous pleas to Central Management Services to make an accommodation, either a summary or having an opportunity for people to look at that, and the repeated answer that we got was our position has not changed, and they even expressed the sentiment that they're not FOIA-able. So, we made numerous pleas, and the mayor asked me repeatedly, I obliged that, and they're not available.
You know, that may be...
I mean, I might suggest that you take it to Central Management Services or the governor's office.
Yeah. I think it's a bad idea to buy something blind. I think even if something is quote-unquote potentially excludable as a releasable document under FOIA, nothing prevents the Department of Central Management Services to release it nonetheless, and particularly if it's after all the bidding opportunity had expired. I understood that, and we had to go through a series of making the property available to other state agencies, and then it became available for potential bidding among all the government entities within Saginaw County and that kind of thing. So, I think I'll vote present on this, since we don't have a copy of the appraisal.
Further discussion? Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open. Motion passes eight yes, one present. Next item on the agenda is DocuSign 2014-109, an ordinance authorizing execution of an integrated supply agreement between Genuine Parts Company, doing business as NAPA Auto Parts, and the city of Springfield, Illinois, in an amount not to exceed $3,750,000 from March 1, 2014, through February 28, 2017, for the Office of Budget and Management. Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2014-109 on final passage.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. We have three people that have signed up, so why don't we get their, and then we'll go to the Aldermen, if that's okay? The first person that signed up to speak on this was Wally Meethold?
Next.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And if you'd just state your name and address for the record.
My name is Wally Meethold. I live at 607 Wyd Oak Drive in Chatham, and I work for Stonewill, which is a very large family-owned and run parts organization. We sell to the installer. We sell wholesale only. There's not a sign on the building, and we're not in the phone book, so you really can't look us up unless you know who we are. But my concern is, is this was brought up, I found out about it when it came out in the newspaper, and we do sell the city, we sell the state, and I sell a lot of people in the, in Springfield. I don't sell Alderman Edwards, but I'd like to. But I think the city needs to do something. I think that the garage deal is a good idea, but I think we need to look at pricing, and as far as NAPA Auto Parts, I talked to an Alderman and talked about different things, how the pricing is set up, and we are a two-step warehouse, and what that means is, we buy from the manufacturer and sell to the installer, where NAPA is a three-step. The NAPA Corp. in Atlanta, Georgia buys it, sells it to the franchisee in Springfield, Illinois, and then sells it to the city of Springfield. So, what I think is, is it is a good idea, there's no doubt about that, but I also think that we need to look at, compare apples to apples and see out there. We have some other... We have some other family-owned and operated businesses in the city of Springfield that could get in on this. I was told or read in the newspaper that if, if Napa doesn't have it, they will buy locally. And I hope they do. But when it comes to a fire truck, you can't buy certain parts for a truck, fire truck locally. You're going to have to go back to the manufacturer. So that's my concern is I, I hope that you all would think about that and look into it. I also, and I'll ask you this, Mayor, because I really don't know, but I think Mr. Edwards, Alderman Edwards, brought this up a year ago to the City Council. And, but, but I don't know. That's the question I'm asking you. So the other thing is, is I hope that, that you guys and ladies will look into it and give it a good going over and see what we've got out there. And I appreciate your time and effort. And thank you very much.
Thank you. We also had Chad Skarpjak? What is it?
Skarpjak.
Skarpjak. Excuse me. Mr. Skarpjak, if you would again, just state your name and address for the record.
Absolutely. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Alderman. Chad Skarpjak, Gatesway, Schlosser &amp; Gobel, 1231 South Eighth here in Springfield. Here speaking tonight on behalf of Kevin Pierce, who's the President of Break and Clutch Exchange. Mr. Pierce was before the committee last week on this matter. He's been, the Break and Clutch has been here for 44 years in Springfield operating. As an initial matter, we'd like to echo the concerns that were raised earlier tonight about the committee tabling it, putting it back in the committee, and then the council raising it for final passage tonight. Obviously, there's been some other folks that have signed up this evening. But, you know, we run the risk of not having a full opportunity to be heard. Again, we want to reiterate and echo the concerns that were raised by the committee and also by us last week as to the extent of the competitive process and the concerns that we have as to the bids that are up. We understand that the National Joint Powers Alliance has done a legwork on this. In fact, if you can go online to the website and see the documentation behind that process, and if you look at it, it's referenced in the packet tonight. It's Contract 010511. The -GPC is the one particularly in Napa, but there were a few other vendors that were looked at as well. And that document, those documents on the NGPA website show that the request for proposal period for this particular contract was between November 24, 2010, and January 4 of 2011. The RFP was publicized on its website, a website called NoticeToBidgers.com, a Minnesota newspaper on two dates, and an Oregon Daily Journal of Commerce for seven days. That was the extent that that was, proposal was generated out to the public at large. And there was a total of six bids. Napa was one of them. There were a few others. And again, that overcomping, that over, the contract encompassed several different things, including parts that Napa was bidding under. The finding in that document suggests that a selection of variety of quality products will satisfy the needs of the members today. And if you look at that particular document on the website, in my opinion, it sounds like more of a stamp of approval, you know, from good housekeeping or something like that. It's silent as to the competitiveness of the bid and is more along the lines of this is something that could work for you. That was approved by the NGPA Board in Brainerd, Minnesota, on January, February 24th and 25th of 2011, and was subsequently renewed every year. But there's no documentation on the website to indicate that the steps, steps, if any, were taken to reappraise, reappraise the beneficial, the benefit or the, I'm sorry, the applicability of that, of that contract. So there are a few questions that we'd like to present to the council. Is using review from, using a review by the NGPA for this bid, this contract from several years ago, which was a generic national search, and I would submit to the council that a local independent vendor such as Break and Clutch and Brake Exchange or Break and Clutch Exchange would have the opportunity or even notice to make a proposal on that RFP, is, is a proper surrogate for a competitive review for the city? Is a review conducted three years ago indicated the marketplace today? And just because there is a good housekeeping, if you will, stamp of approval on that, is that appropriate for the city of Springfield? Especially when it appears, as I mentioned, that, you know, this was done at a wide, a wide national range. There wasn't really a specific focus in the Springfield or surrounding area. And it's doubtful whether or not local vendors had the opportunity to know about this, much less expected that this would come up three years later. And we also need to look at the cost savings. We understand there's a 10% discount. But where is that coming from? Just because I save 10% on a $100 product doesn't mean it's a good deal for me when I could have bought it $80 down the road. That goes back to the sufficiency of the NGPA. And there's also questions given the exclusivity. This is not only a three-year contract, but there's two options to extend for another three, so a total of nine. What happens if Napa increases the prices? What happens if the quality of parts aren't where we need them to be? And if we hit that cap, what happens? Is there going to be friction? Is Napa going to resist providing parts to the city because it's not hitting profits? Because it's reached the cap? So these loom large, especially given the duration of the contract. We wish that, we ask the council to bring this back into committee, take a strong look at it, and open it up to our local businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Could we do Alderman Griffin, go see, he had his hand up first before him?
A couple of things that I came up, that I had a problem with was, I may have heard something different than the rest of you guys when we first started talking about this. But I could swear during the original conversations, maybe it was stated, it wasn't. I didn't ask the question completely correctly. I was under the impression that they were paying to staff this room. They were going to provide the employees. To me, that means they're providing their pay. They're not providing them for us to pay. That was my, maybe my misunderstanding. I'm sorry if it was. I think, and I talked to Director McCarty about this the other night, and I do not think I've still got the right answer. I was questioning the prices that Napa may have when compared to state bid or federal bid. And I was informed that if the state bid was, was cheaper, they could go through the state bid to buy these parts and sell them to us. I don't believe you can buy stuff through state bid and make a markup to sell to a governmental body that you're buying them for. I believe that's incorrect. I don't, I don't think that's right. One of the things, I talked to Frank Edwards about this the other night, and I don't know the right words here to say it. So Frank, jump in if I, if you know what I'm talking about. If Napa was selling to your garage or whatever, and we, somebody came up the other night and questioned the competition, the quality of the product of what we're getting here with Napa versus what we were getting with some of these other vendors. And the question came up that out in the, in the regular industry, if Napa sold us some bad brakes and we installed them and they found out they were faulty brakes, that Napa would reimburse us for the time, the, the cost of the labor to reinstall the repurposed brakes? Is that something that's included in this? I don't know. I was going to ask that. So if there was some question about the, the quality of the parts, is it a situation where if we put on parts that are not of the highest quality and they end up being faulty, will we be reimbursed for the mechanic's time that was used to put on the wrong parts in the first time? And, and then again, one of the things we've just brought up tonight, I got some concerns, was we enter into a three-year agreement or a nine-year agreement or whatever it really may be. If there's no setting of the prices, we're tied to that agreement. We have no control. If they say, fine, that's great, but for the next three years, we only plan on being in business three more years here in Springfield and we're doubling the prices. If we get a 10% discount of that, we're not saving any money. So there, it doesn't seem like there's been any agreement or any, what if this happens, done from this point forward. And it just makes me a little irritated.
If I can address your questions, I'm not sure I can remember all of them if we want to take them one at a time.
First one, I think, with deal with the workers?
Yeah, first one, I got it written down. First one was regarding the staff. I think it might have been stated that they'll provide the staff. I took that to mean something different than what you might have meant.
The, the staff will be Napa employees, is what that meant. We will be paying for the staff since they will be fully utilized by the city in the operation of our fleet maintenance facility. When you buy a part, you're paying for staff one way or the other. As I indicated last week, we had been told in talking with representatives that when Sally Jo or Joe Bob walks into a part store or an Napa part store at least, and they are purchasing a part, they're paying a markup. And that markup isn't just to cover the cost of the part. It's not just to cover the profit for the company. It's also to cover the cost of overhead in that shop. That cost of overhead includes the employees. In our particular case, the markup that we're paying is 10% over the cost of the part only. So that represents a 10% profit, the cost of the part, and then we pay for the overhead separately. The overhead that you pay walking into a part store, or I pay walking into a part store, is significantly more than 10%. So it's all part of the pricing structure that they have put in place. And they've been doing this for 19 years and have done this at locations all across the country. The nice thing about this, the benefit is, and this may address one of your other questions, that it leads to complete cost transparency. They will provide monthly statements to the city. And we will see the cost of every part that we purchased. We will see, of course, the markup. And we will see the cost of the overhead. That will allow us to do comparisons, which we will do on a monthly basis, of the parts cost that we are paying versus what we could get out there somewhere else. Now, if I may segue over to your, your State of Illinois bid situation. If you look at the contract, you will see that we are shooting for a target of purchasing roughly 90% of our parts through this arrangement. That allows us roughly 10% leeway to purchase on our own from somewhere else, as some places have done that we've talked to. And I will give you a, for instance, we spoke with one fleet operation that has decided it is more cost-effective for them to purchase air filters or oil filters, one of those, through the state bid. So they purchased them directly through the state bid rather than utilizing Napa for that particular procurement. So we would have the same option. That's why the agreement does not stipulate that we must purchase 100% of our parts from Napa. Now, if you'll forgive me, I forget the other questions that you asked, so we can try and address those.
The next one was regarding the inferior parts. Would do that, are they reimbursing for labor? For, I mean, there's some quality control questions.
Sure. I have, sure, I've spoken to them about this. And this was a good conversation that Mr. Palazzolo and Alderman Edwards had. And in speaking to them, generally speaking from their standpoint, they do not have that type of arrangement when it involves fleets. And the reason why is fleets are generally treated more harshly by the drivers than, say, people in their own personal vehicles. It's the same phenomenon you see with rental cars. So they generally don't do that. However, I have been assured that if there's a particular instance that is egregious, that is much more difficult than the norm, more problems than the norm, that they will work with us to reimburse us, not just for the part or replace the part, but also for time spent on that particular issue.
And then my, my last of the four was talking about the price structure of any, not ERT, of course, I know that, but anything in this agreement where we talk about, you know, some ceilings or caps on price increases, et cetera. Is that something we could talk about?
Sure, absolutely. And I alluded to it a little bit in the beginning of my, my discussion. The, the agreement is a cost plus 10% agreement. They must provide to us the cost of the parts that they are providing. So when you talk about markups, you would be talking about marking up in the cost of the procurement or the cost of the part from there. And there is no built-in profit in the quote unquote "cost of the part." Because this agreement is set up the way it is and offers complete transparency, we are going to have that data at our fingertips on a monthly basis. And one of the jobs of our office staff will be going out and routinely comparing the cost of what we're paying to what else is out there on the market. And we've already put Napa on notice that we will be doing this and that that is the reason why it's only a three-year agreement. So that should we not be happy with what we're seeing? Should we see other alternatives out there that are more cost-effective? Then we will be able to get out of that agreement and look to go elsewhere, either with another company or choose to do something else. But one of the things I want to remind everyone is we're not just trying to buy parts at a more, any more cost-effective manner or at a cheaper price. We're also buying a service. We're buying an in-house parts store. And there just aren't too many companies that do this. Napa has been doing it the longest. They are the most mature and they have the most locations across the country. That is really the primary reason why we decided to go with Napa. Having an in-house parts operation in our building means that we do not have to worry about that. We can focus on what's most important for the city of Springfield, and that is making sure that we have a highly efficient operation, that our guys are turning wrenches, they're not waiting on parts, they're not chasing down parts. And they get the vehicles back to our customers, i.e. the other departments, as quickly as possible. And that's the overall goal here. It's saving money on parts, but it's also saving time and becoming more efficient in how we do things. If you will remember the CST report, they made a comment in this, before this council, that walking into our garage operations reminded them of walking into an operation from the 1970s. We're trying to move our operations into the modern era. And the Napa operation or the in-house parts operation is a significant contributor to that goal.
And I think more than half the people up here are understand, or understand that
Certainly.
we are moving that way.
Certainly.
And we're all on board with that. I think there's just some bumps in the road.
Absolutely. And I will say that Alderman Griffin, that we have had some very good conversations with Alderman Jobe, Alderman Turner Simpson, Alderman Edwards, Alderman Thailand in this last week. There has been a lot of questions and a lot of answers that have been provided. And we hope, Mr. Palazzolo and I sincerely hope, that we have provided all of the answers to all the lingering questions out there and that we've been able to, to convince the council that this is certainly in the best interest of the city of Springfield and its taxpayers and its ratepayers.
The only lingering question I have is, I don't understand how we put a number to this ordinance of not to exceed number. I mean, we're going to put fixed trucks when we get there?
I can explain that. Well, when we bring a contract like this for you, we need to put a fiscal impact to it. We need to put a number to it. You have, I think, other contracts in front of you that were on the consent that are for a specific amount or are not to exceed amount. This is no different. The way the math, I came up with a number and the way I did it was this. I looked at what we had been spending on parts. Most of that 3.7 million is just cost of parts. We spend roughly $1 to $1.1 million a year on parts. So when you look at a three-year contract, that brings you up to $3 to $3.3 million alone. And then there's other, other costs associated. We already talked about overhead. At the time, I didn't know what the overhead cost would be, so I figured high. It turns out they're lower than what I thought. So as I've stated a couple of times to, in response to media questions over the last week, the 3.75 number, I think, is a high number. I do not anticipate coming anywhere near that, quite honestly, based on the analysis that Mr. Palazzolo has done on the cost of parts and the potential savings there, as well as what I now know to be the potential overhead cost of this operation. So it is a number. It is high. It is a not to exceed number. Which, again, is something we do quite often in the contracts we put before the council.
Alderman Edwards?
Yeah, I just want to predicate this by saying, I've always been for this project. I don't want to be accused of backing up after what I've said. But I, I look at this thing and I hear that we, we want better service, that we hope this works out, that, you know, what we want and our obligation to follow the law and our ordinances are two different things. There are a lot of directors out there that wish they could just go do something. But our ordinances and the law prevents them from doing this. And I'm a little bit troubled with how the way this was handled. And that tonight, and somebody can correct me if this isn't right, but this proposal by this outside group, the dates were November 2010 to January of 2011. That's three, four years ago, done by a group that really, I don't know if it's addressed in our ordinances or it isn't addressed in our ordinances. in our ordinances, or it isn't addressed in our ordinances. We, we're going to spend a tremendous amount of money here, and whether a group's been in a long time is irrelevant to the law. Our ordinances lay out specifically how we spend our money, and I'm not sure in our ordinances whether it addresses, a co-op can spend this kind of money without some kind of input from us or advertised local? I mean, what I heard was, it was advertised in Minnesota and advertised someplace out on the West Coast. Really? That's, we're allowing that to take precedent over us not running some kind of ad and us not asking for an RFP? I want this to work. I want it to go forward, but I really, really, this troubles me with the way it was handled. And it's, it's no reflection on Mike. I mean, I think Mike is a top-notch guy, I think he's in the right place. I think this is exactly the way that we need to go, but I'm getting vendors talking to me who've said, we really don't know anything about this, it wasn't advertised locally, and we asked specifically about it, we were told that information would be forthcoming, and I don't think it was. So I'm, all I'm asking for is for our corporate counsel to take a look at this, to make sure we're on solid ice, if you will, make sure we're headed in the right direction, and that we have all the i's dotted and t's crossed, because just to throw out an organization and say we're a member of this, and that gives us the right to spend $3.7 million and lock us in for nine years, I think is shaky at best, transparent, not. So I think that maybe I don't agree with, because it wasn't brought up before for people to speak, and eventually, we're going to get where we need to be. But I think it does need to be held in committee. I think we do need to go back and have some, and you know what? So what if it delays us 30 days? It isn't the end of the world for us. And I know what you're trying to do, and I applaud that we're moving forward on this project, but there's just too many questions, too many, if you will, potholes that have not been answered. And I have spent time on the phone with Mike, and I deal with these people on a daily basis. They're a good company. Other companies I deal with are good companies. That's not the question at hand for me. The question for me is the legality of how we reached and handed a contract to a company to spend $3.7 million and maybe lock us into for nine years, and where we go from here. And I'm just going to ask corporate counsel to take some time and make sure that we, do we need to ask for RFPs? Do we need advertising the paper? What are the, what are the questions that are out there about the procedure? Not the pro, the process, not what we're trying to achieve, because just because we want and we want to get there doesn't give us the standing to bypass what our legal obligations are.
If we may, I would invite Mr. Waverin to come up and explain to the Alderman exactly what it is that he is wanting to know.
Specifically, any joint purchasing contract, whether it's the State of Illinois, which we utilize quite extensively, or if it's NJPA and the other group we're a member of is US Commodities, for those organizations to be able to sell to government agencies, they have to prove and comply with the competitive bidding process. Otherwise, they can't make those contracts available. Legal initially has looked at NJPA, they've looked at US Commodities. Now, maybe they need to look further into them, into greater detail on exactly what those organizations are or what they did, but at this point in time, they had to meet the requirements for competitive sealed bid in order to sell to government bodies. The whole purpose, of course, of joint purchasing was volume discounts. If they're selling across the nation, we should be able to get better pricing, we should be able to take advantage of that by all of us jumping on. So no, you do not have to bid, you know you do not have to go and advertise in the paper, right or wrong, but it is a joint purchasing contract, which does exempt you from all those competitive bidding procedures.
If I may, Mayor?
Sure.
How did we get into NJPA or US Commodity?
We've been in NJPA, I would say probably a year and a half. They approached us, just like US Commodities approached us and asked us if we wanted to get in.
Let me ask you a question here.
Sure.
Okay, that was the answer. We got in a year and a half ago. By our ordinances, by our legal standings, was that agreement to join that brought before this body for a vote, or did somebody just take it upon themselves to join this organization?
No, it was never brought before city council.
Then it's probably illegal, because...
Both organizations.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, let me finish. That's an obligation that any time our community is bound to spend money, takes a vote of this body to join an organization, to spend money, to do whatever. And now to just throw this out, that we joined it a year and a half ago, and they're the authority on us without this body? This body here that has the right to bind us to contracts and not bind us to contracts or bind us to groups was left out of that process. And I, quite frankly, don't like it. It should have explained to us a long time ago that we were going to join this organization, and this is why, and this is who they are, and this is what they're going to help us. And now here we are on a contract that we're going to spend $3.7 million, and they're the authority, and we don't know anything about them. And I think if we were going to join an organization or a co-op to bind the city to spend money, I think there was an obligation to bring it in front of this body and decide as a group for the city whether we were going to join this organization or not join this organization, because it's being used as how we should spend our money. And I, I don't know who they are.
That's a question to address the corporate counsel for you. Your question should go to him. As a purchasing agent, I just had to make sure that they followed the competitive bidding process. It was a joint contract, which they are, and as a purchasing agent, I can exempt it from the bidding process. Your other question is more appropriate for corporate counsel.
Mr. Waverin, have we ever brought joint purchasing with a state contract, an agreement with the state or anything?
No, not, not in agreement with the state. We have brought many contracts that we did on joint purchasing, utilizing the state because of the dollar amount. But the same thing applies for the state as it does NJPA and US Commodities. The answer would be, no, I've never seen or brought an ordinance to participate in any of those organizations to get the Alderman Edwards concerns.
Does our connection to NJPA or the state or any of the other co-ops cost us money? Is there any monetary obligation?
No, it's a simple mom...
That's irrelevant.
It's relevant.
That's irrelevant. What's that got to do with, does it cost us money? You're going to spend $3.7 million from an advisory group that this body knew nothing about, and that's what we're using as an excuse to do it.
Alderman Simpson?
Thank you. I have several, still have several concerns with regard to, not NAPA, I don't know NAPA, I don't buy parts from NAPA, I don't care about NAPA. I have concerns about the process. When we look at, as Alderman Edwards has said, and all the concern that Alderman Griffin had with regard to the National Joint Powers Alliance, we're talking about an RFP that went out three years ago? Things change in a year. Pricing may change in a year. I don't know, and this is a Minnesota group, Minnesota-based service cooperative, that we didn't know anything about. Why didn't Mr. McCarty even maybe update, get some updated information with regard to this, the bid, to see if there are any other national suppliers who could address our needs? You know, he said, you know, any major supplier, you know, he said, NAPA is going to come in, and NAPA has done this, so they, I guess they'd do it best. But I'm sure that any major supplier that has a store can come in and set up a store in our facility. I mean, that's not rocket science. They, that's what they do. Okay, so I mean, that's not anything peculiar to NAPA. They all do that. So I mean, you know, just, I think if you just ask them, they say, yeah, we could do So, you know, I really take exception that we would not do an RFP in Illinois, from Illinois, and send it out to national suppliers to see if they could give us pricing, give us information with regard to these pricings. And I am all in favor, despite what, you know, I've been villainized on the radio by Mr. McCarty and others about me not wanting this to happen. I want this to happen, because any, any way that we can save the citizens money, I'm all for that. But again, it's the process. I take real exception to the fact that Mr. McCarty's, you know, we, we were, I believe, misled to believe that NAPA was going to be paying these employees, but we find out that not only are we paying them a salary, we're also paying their benefits. And when I asked for Mr. McCarty to provide me with the rationale for this, one thing I really take exception to, he alludes to the fact that we can't trust our employees. Now, if we can't trust our employees...
That's not true, but...
I'm going to tell you, I'll read your statement. I'll read what you said. Now, maybe I interpreted it wrong, okay? The parts room would be off limits to all city employees because NAPA will own the inventory inside, which is good. Now, maybe you didn't write this, which is good, because it means we don't have the inventory set up and carrying costs. Given that, the employees that work the parts room must be NAPA employees. There's no concern about parts disappearing that way, and if they do, it isn't the city's responsibility to pay for it. The only time we pay for a part is when they hand it across the counter, and at that point, it goes on a vehicle that can be traced to our new FMIS system. We're city employees in parts rooms. We are responsible for all inventory tracking, stocking costs, obsolescence, disappearance, et cetera. I cannot overstate the benefit of removing inventory responsibility from the city. If you got employees that you don't trust, then you need to get rid of them, okay? Now, if we got to pay, I don't know, how much are we paying these NAPA employees? Are we paying them the same salary rate that we would pay city employees? Are we paying them more? Are we paying them less?
Less.
I don't know. Why do we have to pay their benefits? Because if we pay their benefits, if they hurt on the job, do we also have to pay workers' comp for them?
No.
Pardon me?
No.
Where's that written?
It's, they're NAPA employees, it's a NAPA responsibility. We're simply paying the salary and the fringes. And again, it goes back to what I stated earlier.
Well, you know what?
We would be paying for it one way or the other.
That needs to be writing someplace for me. When you, the initial agreement that you sent out, and I was reading it, it indicated that NAPA would have sole discretion. Did that change in terms of affording local contact, if they needed parts from local vendors? Do they have sole discretion now, or has it changed to this wording under 4G?
Yes, we added a local vendor preference to allay some concerns from some of the council members that local vendors would be completely cut out of the process. Once again, I want to reiterate that NAPA is a local vendor.
So they don't? So then, they don't have sole discretion? We can, they have, we have the latitude of, so they have...
Well, it's now written into the agreement, as you just pointed out.
We'll supply them with the local list of local vendors, but they still have sole discretion? Is that what you're saying?
What I'm saying is, it's written in the agreement now, just as you just pointed out, that they must use a local vendor. It mirrors the local vendor preference that we use in the city procurement system. 5% for the city, 3% for the county.
Okay.
Almy Cameron?
Oh, no, one other thing. I'm sorry. If, if we're going to get nowhere near that $3.5 million...
$3.75, I believe.
Then why do we have a figure that high? Why don't we have it, why isn't it 1.3, 1.75 or something?
It's a not-to-exceed. You have all approved lots of contracts that are not to exceed...
If you say we're never going to get anywhere near that...
I say I'm confident that we aren't, yes, that's correct.
Then why do we have to have it that high? Can we have not to exceed $1.5 million?
No, because we spend more than, in parts alone, on that in three years easily. We spend approximately $1 to $1.5 million...
Can we have it not to exceed 2.5?
Excuse me?
Can we have it not to exceed 2.5?
Not for a three-year contract, no. Since we spend $1 million a year on parts...
The Alderman could floor amend it to whatever she would like.
That is correct.
Alderman Musk, or Almy Cameron, then Alderman Musk.
First of all, I think, you know, as, I think, well, everyone I've heard speak tonight say that, you know, they're behind, fully behind the garage consolidation. It's just that we want to make sure it's done correctly, and to the extent we can, the business can be given out or done locally, that's our preference. But I've got a question here. You said that based on what we're spending now, we're spending three, over three years, based on what we're doing now, we would be spending $3.3, $3 to $3.3 million on parts. And we're also spending a certain amount on paying the employees who staff the parts departments, correct?
That is correct.
So how much over three years under the way we're operating now would we be spending on these employees and who staff the parts departments at our various garages?
Let's see, do some quick math, one point, about $4.3 to $4.5 million.
That's over three years?
Yes.
So, so basically, under the current system, we'd be spending about $7, $7 or $8 million over three years for parts and for paying the employees?
Excuse me? I'm sorry.
Well, you said we're, I, the question was, you said we're paying, in just the parts, over three years now, we're paying $3 to $3.3 million a year.
Right.
So I was asking you to separate out the amount that we just paid, just to, you know, to staff the parts department.
We would be paying approximately $1.3 to $1.4 million more on top of that. That's where I come up with the $4.3 to $4.5 million number over, over three years.
So you're saying over three years, under the current scenario, we'd be paying about $4.7 million?
$4.5, give or take, yes.
And under this, under this scenario, could be $3.75, so we're still saving...
Not to exceed.
Yeah, so we'd still be saving some...
Right, the personnel savings alone is $300,000 to $350,000 a year. That doesn't count any part savings. That doesn't account any savings garnered from efficiencies with our, our mechanics turning wrenches not out chasing down parts or waiting on them. It doesn't count any savings garnered from not having to worry about inventory carrying costs. So alone, you're looking at significant savings of somewhere around half a million dollars a year, not even counting those other things.
All right, now, this is a three-year contract. I don't see, in this contract that we, was put on our desks, I don't see anywhere in here where it's, gives a termination date or...
It would be three years from when it was signed.
Yeah, but it doesn't say, this is, we were handed this draft contract, it's put on our desks.
Mm-hmm.
It should say somewhere in there that...
I believe the dates are blank until it's passed and signed.
It says the effective, as, it should be effective on blank date, but it doesn't have a, I don't see where it's in here where it has a termination date.
Right, but it does state in there it's a three-year contract.
Where?
Hmm, pull it up here and I can...
It doesn't.
Term, okay, it doesn't paragraph three, you're right. All right, but there's no, is there any provision? Where is the provision for renewal or for, is there any provision for, that either party can terminate early on a certain number of days' notice?
Yes, there's termination clause in there. I can't point to it right now, but I know there's one in there.
15, 1015, but that was one of the things we want to talk about pretty soon here, was it talks about how NAPA can unilaterally terminate this agreement, but not the city of Springfield.
Well, there's a, 12 is termination for cause, but I don't see anywhere in here where there's termination just for no cause, just by giving X amount of days' notice.
Yes, as either party can terminate.
What paragraph?
At its convenience with a 60-day notice.
What paragraph is that?
That's under three term.
Okay, all right, and then...
Either party may terminate this agreement at any time for its convenience by giving the other party 60 days prior written notice of such termination. the other party 60 days prior written notice of such termination.
And then, I like, you know, you added this provision, uh, I think maybe an alderman Joe's suggestion under 4G about favoring the county, the city and county contractors. But I don't see anywhere in here where you define city and county contractors. I think you need to define that, because it's defined in our city code when we pass the ordinance, but it's not defined in here.
We could, we just felt like it was, understood that a Cindy, a city vendor was somebody who was within the city and a county vendor was somebody who was within the county.
I think it's best in contracts that you don't leave any room for guessing. And finally, I, what, what would be wrong with, uh, putting out, as some of the aldermen have mentioned, a request for proposal and seeing whether there are any local businesses that maybe could meet or even, uh, do better than the price that NAPA would give us? Or maybe some other national contractor might wanna get into this.
Well, I think Mr., and he can come up and address this, but Mr. Palazzolo wrote out, per the council's request, the step-by-step process and provided it to everyone, what we did and how we came to this determination. And he provided that last week. If you would like him to come up and somewhat refresh that, he certainly can. But at the end of the day, I will tell you that the reason NAPA was chosen was exhaustive research on our part.
By who?
Mr. Palazzolo and myself.
That's not what you told us last week. You told us is NJPA or whoever they are.
NJPA simply did the bidding process, and we simply utilized them as a vehicle for the contract. But as far as choosing NAPA and deciding to go with NAPA, no, this has been a year and a half of exhaustive research. It's been a year and a half of conversations with fleet managers all across the country, a year and a half of visits to fleet operations with NAPA in-house parts operations. It's been conferences, it's been seminars.
That's our point. You can't just go out and have a bunch of exhaustive contracts and hand out a contract for 3.7 million. That's not the way the law works.
I, I respectfully disagree.
Have a con-
I disagree.
Discussion, well.
I disagree, I, I'm not, I really don't understand.
I think, I think this administration is gonna start a line of directors just to have and talk whoever they want to, and then come in and expect the council to spend 3.7 million dollars. I think we're in for a lot of trouble. I think there's a process that we use in the law that's pretty well spelled out in our ordinances. And just having contracts, contacts and discussions across the country doesn't meet that criteria. Now-
It does answer the question on how we decided that NAPA was the best for this operation. That's all I was merely anticipating.
I think Jay Waverin just said there, he could wave his magic wand and say, "I think this meets the contract." But I think if you do that, I think we're in for a lot of trouble.
Director?
Yes, sir.
Are there any other-
Corporation Council.
I just, uh, been Googling like crazy here, but, uh, starting off with our own city code, our city code in section 38.50 permits, uh, the Department of Central Services to purchase supplies in cooperation with the State of Illinois pursuant to the Joint Purchasing Act of the State of Illinois. And that's in, we cite to it ourselves, it's 30ILCS 525/1. Now, going to that, that allows the State of Illinois to make contracts so long as they have competitive selection processes with other units of government. And the, uh, NJPA is a state unit of government, subdivision of government under the State of Minnesota. So, that is connecting the dots under NJPA as far as the solicitation process. We have followed a competitive solicitation process by our ability to go with the State of Illinois, which in turn has entered into a compact with the State of Minnesota for this type of procedure. Now, that's, that's regarding the legality of the, uh, solicitation process for how we got to these prices and getting with NAPA beyond that, as far as whether it's a good policy decision to, decision as for you people.
And if I might just add one more thing, I, I do wanna bring to the council's attention that the, there have been many approvals for things purchased off of NJPA prior to this evening. We've been purchasing things since, uh, October of 2012 off of NJPA.
Who, who found NJPA? How do we find them?
Now, I could leave that to Mr. Waverin, but I believe he stated when he was up here that they actually contacted us to let us know about their existence as a national procurement group.
So, let, let me ask a hypothetical question here.
Question?
Yeah, if, if there's a company, me and Griff form a company, out in Nevada, and Nevada goes, "Hey, you're a good, couple good old boys. We recognize you." That meets the criteria for the State of Illinois? The State of Illinois recognizes Nevada as a legitimate form of government?
Not, not just the State of Nevada, it has to be a specific compact with, with that particular, uh, division of the state.
I mean, I just get real nervous when we start using things that like, and I'll use your words, corporate counsel, connect the dots to get where we need to be. It's just sometimes, and, and I like what you said, policy and connecting dots are two different things. And I think when we start trying to connect the dots to do something to the tune of 3.7 million dollars, I don't like that. I think that when we should be able to say we're doing this under the State of Illinois because they awarded a contract with NAPA, that's pretty clear. That's our home state doing what they do. But when we gotta connect dots to get where we need to be, I just, I, I don't like it.
Alvin Lusk.
Well, I, that was me. Okay, should I should continue?
Well.
Well, first of all, just, I think what you read, Council Greenberg, was about our, how we can engage with the, uh, joint purchasing program of the State of Illinois. I don't know what that has to do with the, uh, this other joint purchasing program that directly-
Well, because the State of Illinois has the authority to enter into intergovernmental compacts with other, uh, joint purchasing entities of other states.
Right, but I thought this joint purchasing, uh, thing that we, we entered into that Mr. Palazzolo, that Mr. Waverin described was something we did directly, not through the State of Illinois.
As I, as I interpreted what you read, is this is a subsection of the State of Minnesota, this organization?
Yes, it is a governmental subdivision of the State of Minnesota that, that uses competitive solicitation processes.
Right, but didn't that section of the code that you read concern the joint purchasing program of the State of Illinois?
Yes, and, and, and that requires that they have to use, uh, a similar subdivision of another state that uses competitive solicitation processes.
All right, thank you. Director, the, the question I was gonna ask you before was, are there any other parts companies that you know of other than NAPA, like maybe, uh, Parts America or any that who have established parts departments in governmental, uh, governments, like city governments like NAPA has?
It has been a little while since we've looked at that. I believe O'Reilly's may have something somewhat similar. Again, a company quite like NAPA being a national, a national group with, with stores everywhere. There, there just aren't too many.
So, well, in your research, did you look into seeing whether one of those, like O'Reilly's, am I, what sectors of it?
Again, we, we spoke to, and, and Mr. Palazzolo may, may wanna come up, but again, we, we spoke to countless fleet professionals from around the country. And one of the things that Mike and I have discussed, and one of the things that he's concerned about, I know, in setting this up, is we are entering into a whole new, reimagined fleet maintenance operation, if you will. And in entering into this new operation and what we're doing, which has been a monumental task, I think that we both felt like we had the most comfort based on the conversations we had with the fleet professionals from around the country, that when we're first doing something, that we want to have the company that has been doing it the longest. And now, I, I will tell you that we have every intention of monitoring the performance of NAPA, of looking at parts costs, of looking at competition. And that is something that his operation, Mr. Palazzolo's operation, will be doing over the next three years. When we first spoke with NAPA, the original agreement proposal was for five years, and we were comfortable with that. While we were comfortable bringing them in to get this started, we wanted to have the opportunity to evaluate it for the first three years and then make a decision whether or not it made sense to do something different or to stick with NAPA. So, that will be part of the process over the next three years. But Mike, feel free to jump in and add anything you want about, about the process and the conversations that you've had, because, because Mike has done more, more reaching out than I have in this area.
Mike, you know, you asked a question about O'Reilly's, and O'Reilly's, they give us like two locations. They was in government entities, and they was out in California that was doing, uh, kinda like something similar to what NAPA's doing. And it just, you know, there wasn't enough research there for us to, you know, jump in and do this.
You mean, they have two operations in California?
They provided us the two operations out in California, yes.
Simply where they're operating parts department for cities, municipalities?
Something similar to what NAPA's doing, yes. When we looked and, and we drove, you know, first place we went was Des Moines, Iowa, and, and we looked at the operation there, and it was a NAPA operation. And, you know, we asked how that process worked, uh, and we went through their shop, we went through their parts room, we talked to their people, how it worked, uh, and, and that's actually the only one that told us that, you know, when they first started, it wasn't the best solution because it wasn't the right fix, the person in there, it wasn't the parts, uh, the supplying that was the problem, that they just didn't have the right person in there. And then they replaced that with another person, NAPA worked with them, to get somebody new in there, and then the process worked very well. And they've renewed that contract at least once or maybe twice since then. Uh, we, we talked to the city of Aurora. Uh, when we talked up there, they said the operation was, you know, it had nothing but praise for it. We talked to the employees, again, we talked to the NAPA folks, we talked to the managers. And, uh, everything they had was positive. Uh, and, and one of the things they stressed, they had the right person in there. In fact, they, you know, the comment to me from Joe Hop up there, which is the fleet superintendent, is this guy's like one of our own. Uh, you know, that's what makes it a success. And he said the dollar savings was there. And I think he was quoted in the paper, and he called me to apologize because the paper didn't write what he had said. They said that there was a wash. They said that is not what he said. When he was interviewed with, uh, Channel, not Channel 20 was the newspaper, they said on some items, it's a wash, but overall, they were saving money with the process. And they was quite satisfied with how it worked. We went to the city of Louisville, Kentucky, uh, where they just went through a consolidation. They just consolidated their, uh, their local governments, the counties, uh, in around the city, not just the city. In, in fact, they purchased, uh, the facility was an auction site, I believe it was 37 acres, uh, to put together one facility to maintain all the vehicles for the Louisville metro area. And when we got down there, actually, we went down there, believe it or not, was to look at fleet system. And when we got there, their, their parts operation was NAPA. They looked into another operation and found that NAPA was still the better choice for them. And they was happy with NAPA, but they did their diligence to look at somebody else. So, it just wasn't something we went out and just decided one day that we're gonna go with NAPA. I mean, I've been talking to people on this for the last year and a half, and, and, you know, we started this, uh, back in, uh, April of 2012, and that's when I was still with Public Works, and we went down to St. Louis to a NAPA convention. In that area, we started talking to people about the, the parts, you know, how do you, how do you acquire your parts? And that's where we started with this process. Then I started looking into it. That's what prompted me to ask for, uh, our fast, current, moving parts that we use on a daily basis, and that's what I used for the analysis. And the parts that I, the parts numbers and parts prices that I received from our garages, they come off of the invoices that we was paying, uh, to the local vendors at that time. And it included a variety of local vendors, along with O'Reilly and NAPA, and, and other, both, you know, at least one of them was up here tonight, they had some of that listing in there. And I took, I took that information without prices, and I sent it off to NAPA, and I says, "Okay, give me your cost price." And I said, "Tell me what your cost plus 10% is." And then when I brought it back, and then I, I didn't even have the cost on the items that I asked for. I first asked for just item numbers and what they was. Uh, and then I went back and I asked for the prices that they gave me. Then I took that and compared it to the price that NAPA has given us. Uh, and that's how I come up with, uh, you know, with the analysis that I sent to all of you. Uh, in that process, uh, you know, there was, uh, some items that, uh, you know, like the police garage, it's a preferred vendor, Landmark Ford. Uh, and that, you know, that's one of the reasons they put that in there. And, and we talked to NAPA, there's certain things, and it's like alternators, they're buying their alternators at Landmark Ford, they're not buying them at NAPA, they're not buying them at O'Reilly's. And they said they last longer, they're on police cars, it's a better product. That kinda things are preferred vendor, we're gonna look at that. We're, we're not gonna put something on a vehicle that's not going to, uh, you know, be a good fit for us. You know, because it's a little bit cheaper, doesn't mean it's cheaper down the road if we're pulling it off and on, so that's where we're gonna still use some local vendors.
Uh, under this contract, if NAPA has the, can provide the part, they, they, it has to be a NAPA part.
No, it hasn't.
We, we can, we can designate with them where we want that part to come from. If it's, if we have something that's better, now, we may have to pay the difference in price. But we have the option to tell them that, you know, the, that we want these to come from somewhere else. And in that contract, and, and you will see in there that it's 10% for NAP items, or cost plus 10%, and you will see in there that for non-NAP items, it's cost plus 10%. There's a lot of parts out there that NAPA will not be, be able to provide that we purchase on a daily basis, but they'll be able to acquire them for us.
Wouldn't you think we should pay something less than 10% if it's not coming from NAPA? Because we gotta, we probably have to pay a higher initial price.
But they have the overhead of going out and getting it, and distributing it, and bringing it, and stocking it, and-
What about these, uh, operations of O'Reilly in California? Did you check those out?
No, I did not.
Again, it goes back to the conversations that we had, and he, he alluded to a point that I should've brought up earlier. There was concern from some folks that there wasn't competitive bidding done, an RFP process done and all that. Well, we know that NJPA did that a couple of years ago, and I do want to state that, for the record, that the, the proposal and the agreement that was reached with the NJPA, those terms and conditions haven't, haven't changed. It's always been cost plus 10%. There wasn't a price list that maybe went up or went down or anything like that, it's just cost plus 10%. But the point I wanted to bring up is that Louisville, Des Moines, and Aurora, which he didn't mention, all recently went out for RFPs on their operations, and they all went with NAPA once again.
Well, so what would be so bad with, of us doing an RFP like the others?
Well, in three years, we would probably look at doing that.
Pardon me?
Absolutely, I said absolutely, in three years, we would look at doing that. But when everybody else in the profession, for the most part, is pointing to one company, we tend to trust their, what they're saying, and, and I trust with Mr. Palazzolo, his research and his opinion.
So, basically, you're saying there's no need to do an RFP if others, a bunch of other cities did RFPs for the same thing, and they came out, all came with the same answer, then there's no point in doing an RFP?
And they came up with the same cost.
What we're saying is that's one component of the research that was done.
Alvin Lusk, do you have?
Yes. Okay, so, NAPA's gonna reach out to local vendors, okay? How do they decide what vendor they're gonna reach out to?
We'll provide them with a list that we're using to-
Well, are you gonna, are you gonna make that process fair?
Fair?
Yes.
Well, they'll have a list of the vendors, and they can call them all, and whoever gives us the best price will be the vendor that's, it's like our regular procurement. We're trying to, we're trying to procure something at the lowest possible cost for city taxpayers. So, if there's two or three vendors out there-
So, they're gonna call every vendor every time?
Except with the preferred?
Yeah. They're gonna call every vendor every time?
I can't speak to what they will or won't do. Now, again, the majority of our parts will come through their system, but not all of the parts will. And I think after, say, three, six months of, of dealing with vendors, they'll have a pretty good idea of where they can get the best price. But I think at the end of the day, what I've heard is, most people just wanna guarantee that local vendors will be given a preference, and that has been written into the contract.
Well, no, I want the best price, and I wanna make sure it's fair. I just don't care that we're going to a local vendor and saying, "Well, let's just go to him." I mean, it's gotta be fair, it's gotta be a fair process, it's gotta be-
Well, sure.
Let me address-
Transparent, wait, wait. Uh, I have another question before we go on, and then, Mike, you can do that. I know we've got stock there in the room right now. The stocks that's there, the parts that we have, is NAPA gonna, are they gonna distribute those parts for us for free?
Yes.
Yes, it's written into the agreement.
Okay, they're gonna do it all for free?
Yes, anything that we have. Yes, anything that we have. Not only are they going to take the parts that we can use and carry them for us and distribute them to us at no cost, they're not gonna charge us for our own parts, obviously, but they will carry them for us. They will also go through, and anything that we can't use, they will help us dispose of, and we will receive reimbursement for that. So whatever we can sell those parts for, disperse them for, that, that is what they will do.
Okay, Mike, you start to say something.
All right. You had said about, and I think what you're driving at is, is every time we need a part, they're gonna go to the local vendor and shop every day? I don't think so. I think what they're gonna do is go out to the local vendors and, and do exactly what we would do. What is your best price you're gonna give us? And then that would be the vendor that has the lowest price, it's the local vendor, that's who we'd go to. In a lot of cases, we do contracts with tow vendors. And we may set a contract out there, and the tow vendors may be range of a price of one through five, as five being the cheapest. And when we call out a tow, we call them the one that's cheapest first. If he's not available, we call them number four and down the line. And I, I think that that's probably how they would set that up. I don't think they will be out price shopping every day for a local price.
Mike, and I know you've worked hard for, worked hard on this, and I appreciate it, and I appreciate how far we're going on this. But to me, it seems like there's a lotta loose ends, 'cause you're saying that you can't guarantee me right now that that's a process they're gonna go through. You're coming in, you're saying, I think that they're going to do this. Mr. McCarty just said, I think that they're going to go this direction with this. But we need to have this contract ironclad where it's written, and we know exactly what they're gonna do, exactly the direction they're gonna go. And the 10% charge on parts that aren't theirs, that they're going out to somebody else and they're making a, making a phone call to get that part and charging us 10% on that, I have a problem with that. I just think that that can add up, 'cause you just said that there's gonna be a lotta parts out there that NAPA can't provide. So if there's a lotta parts that NAPA can't provide, then we're gonna be paying 10% up charge, paying NAPA not only their salary, but then 10% to go out and get the parts that we need. I just think there's a lotta loose ends here. I, I just don't feel comfortable supporting this tonight. But I do appreciate the direction we're going, and I do appreciate your hard work. I just don't think they're ready to move on it.
I, I think what they'll be doing is going out there trying to find better prices for us.
But you just said that they're gonna set up a list.
But that's, that's the other thing about having a national company like this with partnerships all over. They will give our local vendors every opportunity to, to get the business through the pricing, but they also can go elsewhere if it's more cost effective for the city of Springfield.
But we're talking in circles here, because we said that we're not gonna, that they're gonna set up a list, one, two, three, and four, that they won't call every time to get the best price. So that's in conflict with what you're saying.
Well, they know what the pricing is for their national relationships, though. If they have two or three vendors out there who can provide an OEM part, then they will already know what the pricing is.
And they're gonna know that they can get that cheaper than any local vendor.
Well, they will contact the local vendors, certainly, and know.
So they are gonna call each other every time?
Now, you know, our fleet's fairly static, so they're going to know what parts we use and don't use. What we're guaranteeing tonight, what we're telling you is, the savings is inarguable. We can easily demonstrate savings that are in excess of $300,000 to $350,000 a year, and probably more. What we're trying to do is have the leanest, most cost efficient operation we can possibly have by also taking care of allaying some of the concerns with regards to the vendor, local vendor preference. That is now in the agreement. It mirrors our city procurement policy.
Do you have those numbers for that $300,000 savings comparison prices?
It's the, that's just the personnel, we're not talking about parts prices. Mr. Palazzolo, I, I provided the personnel savings of $300,000 to $350,000 in the email. Mr. Palazzolo provided his analysis on the parts where he came up with looking at 172 of our most utilized parts, approximate savings of around 20% give or take, and he can address that if you have any questions. So if those hold, well, the personnel will definitely hold, we know we're going from five slots to two. And we know that the two that we're going to be paying in employment, salaries, and benefits is significantly lower. In fact, I believe I made the statement that the cost of the two employees with their benefits will be less than the cost of one of our parts persons with their benefits.
Can you guarantee me then that the 10% on the parts is not gonna take it over that price? The 10% on all the other parts that are bought not from NAPA is not gonna equal out to be more or close to what we're already paying?
No, because as Mr. Palazzolo said...
No, you're not guaranteeing me, or no?
No, I don't believe that to be the case, because as Mr. Palazzolo stated out, or stated earlier, his analysis is that the parts we get from NAPA will be less by approximately 20%. So you have that leeway. Then you talk about the national relationships that are set up where we can get better pricing perhaps than what we're getting, even though our vendors will have every opportunity to fall within the 3% and 5% range. I do not believe, as I sit here today, that it will cost us more to run this parts operation. I sincerely believe, and Mr. Palazzolo sincerely believes, as we've been looking at this for quite some time, that we will save a significant amount of money and headaches in utilizing this operation.
Well, I just, as I said, I'm gonna stick to my original statement, I think there's just some loose ends out there that need to be tightened up. I think we're moving in the right direction. I do appreciate the hard work. It's, it's just gotta be more than a dream, it's gotta be on paper so that we can see it, that it will work and it's a guaranteed, there are no guarantees in life, but some things can be guaranteed. So thank you.
Alderman?
We've been working on garage consolidation for two years, and we're making a lotta progress, and we all want savings. And so it's disappointing, it's unfortunate, that this $3.75 million contract gets a rushed treatment unnecessarily. I was listening to Bishop at, or actually, a citizen of Springfield called and said, hey, you gotta listen to McCarty, he's on Bishop. And it was at that interview today after 11:00 AM that I first learned that this is gonna be pushed up for a final passage. Director McCarty was explaining that there'll be an amendment offered by Alderman Jobe that would offer local preference. And I just thought that was the wrong way to go about it, that something this important shouldn't just be rushed all of a sudden, that, and then to come into the chambers today at 5:30 and we got the amendment. I don't, we might've gotten an email copy, but I, I know we got a paper copy sitting in our mailbox for the local preference. I, I don't think that's the, the right way to go about this.
Actually, Alderman, I, I just wanna clarify, I sent the disinformation to everyone via email last week. I didn't send the actual agreement, I said that we would insert...
That's the point I'm making. We didn't see the language until today, and I saw it for the first time at 5:30, so that's the point I'm making, I didn't see the draft language until today at 5:30. And I had a couple amendments I wanted to offer to the city council, and I talked with a couple of Aldermen about it. One amendment was to shorten the contract length from three years down to two years, and then have some extension opportunities. Why? Because we wanna, if we go with NAPA, we wanna make sure that they're doing this thing right, we wanna have accountability, and we wanna make sure that all this discussion we're having tonight about local preference and spreading some of the local work around, in fact, gets carried out. So if you have a two-year contract, you're able to monitor that more closely. Then the second amendment I wanted to offer tonight, but again, like when we spring this up at the last moment, it's very difficult to offer a floor amendment, because it's, not even have an opportunity to ask our city attorney to draft it up. But the second amendment I wanted to offer was that NAPA provide the city council with a six-month report, every six months, showing the extent and the dollar value of the local purchases that they're able to achieve from our local vendors. And I think that's a proper, a proper way to monitor this. If we're getting commitments tonight, they just can't be blind commitments that we're gonna try to buy some batteries and some clutches and some other things from other local vendors. We wanna see that they actually carry out the intent of the new contract language that we're seeing for the first time at 5:30. So I think maybe the administration kinda took me for granted as a yes vote on this, but tonight, I'm a present vote, because the dust, dust needs to settle on this. And, and I, I think that a lotta questions have been asked, and we need to just let this settle for next week's committee hole, and then a final passage vote a week after that.
Alderman? You asked for the six month to check on that, in that contract, they have to provide something to us monthly.
Every day.
To check on it. That's in the, in that contract. They will provide a report to us monthly, every month with a bill.
Well, that's true, but the report doesn't specify that they'll aggregate the portion that was sold to this local vendor and aggregate the portion that was sold to that local vendor. That's kinda specificity that I'd like to see for monitoring purposes and accountability.
I believe in there, they have to show us on every vendor that they go out and purchase from, and, and NAPA internally themselves, too.
I think they got the means to report it to us, but if we don't ask for it and put it in the contract, we're kinda leaving it to guesswork as to what they'll actually provide us in terms of the, the organization of that paperwork that they give us on a monthly basis.
Alderman Griffin?
This is more probably, I don't know if this is for Mike or for Director McCarty, this is mostly just clarification, a lotta this, just, this is my assumption, so tell me if I'm right or, or reading anything in. And one thing was, in four, in number four, the thing that there was, this is, maybe again, I'm being led to believe, like I said, that the statement was made, NAPA will provide all personnel required to operate the onsite store. If my wife says, I'm gonna provide dinner tonight, I don't want her to give me a bill at the end of the night, I never expect that. She's providing it, she's providing it, meaning they're paying for it. But, so that, that's just why, another reason why I was misled, I think. I don't think I might've misunderstood it correctly. The one thing about the, I just taken it for granted, just, it maybe just needs to be stated. We're talking about NAPA taking our inventory, just getting inventory in it for us at price and giving it back to us, ours will be gone through first, it'll be a first in, first out basis. It didn't state that, so I just, just saying it out loud so we all know that first. And the part about they'll provide 90% of the parts on demand, and then it basically just talks about they'll procure the items from another source if they don't have them, not if they can do it cheaper, it doesn't really, it's just saying they'll have 90% of them on hand, it doesn't, but we were talking tonight is, if it's cheaper, we will go to another situation possibly. And again, that, that same thing led into the, the talk about here about the procuring the parts, and then we talked about the local vendors, et cetera, and then, again, then marking up over those, those vendors' prices. The other thing I had was, just a clarification, when we're talking about, and this is when I pointed back to that, on number 15, when we're talking about, you know, per, just for cause, if we want, we can get us out of this in 60 days if we have to, they can do the same thing if they have to. We talked about change of control back on 15. Again, this contract was written strictly for the city of Springfield. It says NAPA can terminate this agreement with 30 days if one of the things happened. To me, the customer is, because back here, it talks about overtime must be okayed by the customer first, to me, that means the mayor's office. They call the mayor and say, we've got a problem, we gotta be open all night, the mayor should be able to just say, okay, we, I okay that, you can put somebody in there, they can staff it tonight, we'll pay that overtime at time and a half, which is why they said, that would be my understanding. If that is my understanding, then on this part right here, they say, if there's a change in the management of the customer, meaning if, if the mayor doesn't run and someone else is the mayor, then they can just terminate this contract? Is that, I mean, this was specifically written for us?
Actually...
Why was that in there?
It, it's just standard in all of their agreements that they have, we talked about this a little bit, and they understand that it's a little bit different with regards to, you know, the city of Springfield, obviously, and other entities like us, but it's just standard that their attorneys have them include that. They, it's a much, much greater chance that we would wanna terminate with them than they would ever wanna terminate with us.
Right, I just...
Alderman, I did ask that question.
Why they left that in there?
I did ask that question.
So that's not, that's not your understanding?
No, 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 no.
Okay, that's...
Not, not that it was explained to us.
I'm just clarifying it, I just wanna say it out loud.
Yeah, no, I agree. We, we had the same question, actually, we had the same question.
And the only other thing I got, and again, I think we're kinda rushing into this possibly, it's a good idea, we're getting there, this conversation's healthy for all of us. Okay, we sell, we, we go this new direction, we get this business, we get up and we're running, and we think it's gonna be fine. If, are we, are we in a position that in 60 days, if they decide they're pulling out, we have plan B in place? If NAPA says, you know what, I'm done with this, we're not gonna be able to bring parts people on and have the inventory and have it all, I mean, what are we gonna do? What's our backup plan should this goes out?
Well, part of what, part of what Mike and his staff will do is develop some sort of a contingency plan in the very unlikely event that that would happen. Is Mike, and correct me if I'm wrong, I don't, you may, I haven't heard of anyone, anywhere that, that NAPA has ever pulled out of the agreement.
My experience of Springfield starts for a lotta things.
And Mike, you've talked to more people than me, so I, you may know one that I don't.
Some of the staff that we're gonna have, that we're gonna retain, that are, some of them are mechanics that got shoved into parts rooms, they have that experience, and if we have to, we'll go back to that experience.
Will we be able to, will we do just say, okay, that's our spot now, Joe, you're back in there, and then start buying?
If they pull out of it, we, we, if they pull out of it, we have to come up with contingency.
Right, we'll, we'll have a contingency plan in place.
And I think this is kinda like, like Joe's saying, I mean, this is just common sense. How come we don't, today, while we're sitting here writing and spending $4 million, how could we not, how could we overlook that? How could we not, I mean, I didn't say it until now, but I just thought, well, I was looking at the agreement, I'm saying it's 30 days this way or 60 days that way. You can't just say, oh, well, timeout, we're not gonna fix trucks for another couple of months till we get this in play. That's the kinda stuff I'm thinking, we're, we're rushing through this. I think this is good, I think it's gonna go, I think it's gonna pass, I think it's gonna happen, but I mean, I just, let's...
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, since I made the original motion, I'd like to make a motion to send this back to committee, plus we don't have Alderman Turner here. I don't know if anybody has a second?
Second, then move the second to return this to committee discussion. Are you no discussion, all those in favor of returning it to committees, vote yes, those opposed, vote no.
Should we have some discussion? Did we have, did you have some discussion on sending it back to committee?
You could, yeah.
Because, I mean, some of the questions that have been asked need to be answered during the time between now and the time that we, we deal with it again. Because we, we, we're not protecting ourselves, we need a contingency plan in case the, the unthinkable happens, because if, this is Springfield, it very could, very well could. And I understand why we have language in here that doesn't protect us. NAPA could very well say, Mayor Houston is no longer mayor, McCarty is no longer budget director, we're pulling out. Then what do we do? Because that's the language that's in this contract, and we'll, we're, if we pass this, that's the language, and whether it's standard or not, that's the language and it doesn't protect us.
Mayor? Well, I, I mean, under this contract, either party can pull out with 60 days notice for any reason, they don't have to either, just say, we don't wanna, so, I mean, six, this, that only escalates by 30 days, I don't think the, I think the lang, I think the language shouldn't be in there, but just because it's standard doesn't mean it should be in here if it doesn't apply to us. But one thing that really didn't make sense to me, Director McCarty, is you said that we're paying the salaries and benefits to these...
Is this about the, we're on a motion to withdraw, is this about withdrawing?
This is not, this is about the same long lines that Alderman Simpson was talking about. So we're paying their, their salary, but then when I ask you about when they get parts from an outside agency, we're still paying 10%, cost plus 10%, you said that was to pay for the Manning, or we're peopling of the parts department, but if we're, that means we're paying for it twice. So this, paying the 10% plus when the parts come from outside of NAPA, it really doesn't make any sense to me, I don't see the justification for it. So I'd suggest that maybe you try to renegotiate that, and we should just get, if they're bought from outside NAPA, we should just pay cost, we're already paying for the staffing of the, of the parts store.
Okay, we got a motion, the second, no further discussion? Those in favor, vote yes, those opposed, vote no. Motion passes 9-0, so it'll be returned to committee. Okay, the next item on the agenda, the chair will entertain a motion to withdraw Agenda Number 2014-111.
So moved, second?
It's been moved, and second discussion... It's been moved, the second discussion...
Does that pertain to Mayor?
Hmm?
Excuse me, what does this?
Caremark.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. The chair will entertain a motion to suspend the rules in place on first reading Agenda Number 2014-135, an ordinance approving a contract with Caremark Health LLC to provide pharmacy plan benefit manager services effective March 1, 2014, through February 28, 2016, for an amount not to exceed $12 million for the Office of Human Resources.
So moved.
It's been moved, the second discussion, this, what we're doing is, rather than extending the contract that had expired, this would just be a new contract with some more favorable terms, we just want to take it through the normal process, it'll go to committee, and then come back to the city council. Further discussion, are you no further discussion? All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there any unfinished business coming before the council?
Mayor, I just wanted to correct the misstatement about the Capitol Avenue, you know, I've been a supporter of that, acquiring that for a long time, I was on the record in actually, the Springfield Business Journal, supporting that over a year ago, talked to Paul O'Shea in the planning department about it, so I've always thought it was a good project, I mean, you have to be, you don't need to be a rocket scientist to see that that empty lot in the middle of our central city is not good and needs to be developed, so, thank you.
Alderman Edwards.
Yeah, this makes no sense to me, so I'll read it, and somebody can explain it to me. It was an email I got from somebody, and they said, "Dear Ms. Edwards, I just completed a phone call with a customer service rep with CWLP, and she indicated that the issue I called about was due to a decision by my alderman. I suspect that issue is not that simple, but my complaint is this, I received a special fees bill for others by CWLP for $6.11. I'm not sure if my billing is typical, but if it is, why is CWLP wasting postage, paper, and other resources and out a special bill for such a nominal amount? Could this amount just be added to the next billing cycle rather than waste the resources to send out a special billing for $6.11? Does anybody know what that $6.11 is? I tried to call the guy back and didn't get him, but since we're responsible for the $6.11, could somebody explain what it is?
We'd have to see the bill, I have no idea.
Your bill? No, that's email, you can call them and ask them, and, but...
We've got a lot of calls, because we bill for garbage and things, and people are asking us why it's showing up, and it's not our bill, we just bill on behalf of...
On behalf of the decision we made, I understand that, but I couldn't answer it, it's like, I have no idea what $6.11 is.
We'll take a look at it and see what we can find.
Okay.
Is there any new business coming before the council? If not, we had one person who had signed up, Eric McCauley. Mr. McCauley, if you'd state your name and address for the record.
My name is Eric McCauley, I own Deep Roots Midwest, over on Sixth and Stanford, and anyway, I was wanting to address the panhandling issue that's been going on in Springfield. We've had panhandlers since we opened up our business over on Sixth and Stanford, on our corner and across the street on the corner, and finally asked them to move away from our corner and to just move right down the street, and so I ended up making up a sign, be wary of people that were driving along, that these people were just using the, they were just asking for money and holding a sign just to get drugs, basically. And I found that out, because I know someone that was, that worked at the Bel Air, I said they walked into the, they walked in a room and seen a bunch of syringes and stuff like that that was in there, and so, I also found out they were making four to 500 bucks a day off of people, and taking advantage of people. And so I made a sign, and I just wanted them out of there, and my sign seemed to work pretty good, it got them off the corner, and we've been without panhandlers for about seven days now. And anyway, I'm kind of wanting to see that go all around the city, I was kind of tired of, especially on the south side and the east side, on the north side, you see panhandlers all over the place, people asking for gas money, you know, holding a sign, it's kind of makes the town look trashy. And I think that a simple sign posted on that areas where there's a lot of panhandling and people being approached, that if there was a sign being made saying, you know, "Warning, this is, you know, high drug, high, high drug traffic area," or whatever, and just letting people know that, just warning citizens and tourists and whatnot, so they're not being taken advantage of, and that's about all I've got to say on it.
Thank you, Mr. McCauley, appreciate it. Okay, the chair will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.